And it's, it's, it's a relief actually to see that kind of care from a general contractor. Later on, you could hire your next door neighbor's cousin to do the retrofit, but you would get what you pay for. And you, and so, you know, just, just to let you know, I think FCI's costs are very reasonable for, for doing this type of work. So the other issue I want to speak about is the importance of making a decision now. Even if this decision is delayed and, and we have put some, we've done some research and with the grant applications going in on what it would take to, the cost estimate to outfit the second floor and other things. So that cost estimate and, and when I mentioned the 2.6 million dollar of my cost estimate to outfit the second floor, that's completely based on moving forward with that now. So even if, if that decision is delayed, you will run into, you could use the same construction team, the same design team, but if we don't get the, the design in place to outfit the second floor and we have that design in place when this project goes out to bid for subcontractors, you will not get the same costs. So at that point, if it's delayed, if the decision comes two or three months from now, then you're looking at, at change ordering that into a scope of work that's already been bid out. As you probably understand, you never get the same value when you ask for, you know, you have somebody in place and you ask them to price out a change order to increase their scope of work. So, actually, I'll, I'll, I have a lot more that I can say about the nuts and bolts. I'm sure you will have some questions that relate to that and I'm happy to help. I'm happy to, to talk about the logistics of construction and how important it is to do that, do that now versus do it later in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hornet. Other individuals from staff that would like to, for good. All right. Let's move forward with questions, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I don't know if this would go, this question would best be answered by Mr. Downing. Perhaps if, first of all, I approve, I, I agree with the request to apply for a SLib grant for the project because one of the, as I understand it, one of the requirements for this grant is the change in state law that took place, which kind of forced us to look elsewhere for a courthouse. If the SLib grant request is turned down, is there a plan B? How do you cover the 995 we don't get?
Mr. President, through you, Mr. White. Ultimately, we're still looking at 3.299 million from the, from the six penny overages from the previous six penny tax or, you know, look for other sources, but that's kind of the plan B right now. I, there's no, there's no telling what's gonna happen with the MRG grants. They're, they're pretty competitive. But because they kind of kicked us out of the force base and kind of caused this whole thing, there's a real good chance, I believe, that we could possibly get that grant funded.
Okay. Thank you. And then I guess, Mr. President, through you, one more.
Sure.
And I, this may need to go through Mr. Fountain. Eric, you made some comments about what perhaps could, offices could be going into the second floor if we proceed to build this out, as did Ms. Hackle. Has there been any official decision made on if the mayor's office is to go into the second floor?
Mr. White, through you, President Case. I, no, there has not. The conversation has typically and simply been, if we look at the methods of what makes the most sense, the conversation has been obviously the city attorney, perhaps counsel, and perhaps the mayor's office being most suited as the networking opportunities and the type of work they do together complement each other. And we have to rely heavily on the fact that we have directors in this building that oversee specific department duties. And so we would look to them for their leadership to continue to guide the annex. If that's the route that we went. But there has never been a specific conversation confirming this is the route that we want to go.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that response. Just from my vantage point and Councilman Chenner has certainly been in the Herschler Building as they do this renovation. I, for one, we, my employer got kicked out before the Herschler renovation started taking place. So we've been located at, you know, on South Greeley Highway for the entirety of the Capitol renovation project. I do like the idea of, as you do necessary projects to the municipal building, offices are moved out because I know for the folks who have had to stay inside the Herschler builder, building for this project, it has been nightmarish with regard to noise, distraction, and just basic morale. So that's my two cents. But I don't have any other questions. Mr. President, thank you.
All right. We'll just go round and round if that's said.
Project manager. Having done a little construction in my younger life, drove those yellow shaky machines, it's been my experience that if you, if you shell it out now and then in five years decide to redo something, some of the stuff never really fits, does it? Because you don't have the same construction crews, you don't have the same contractor, that type of thing. Is that been your?
Mr. President, through you. Yeah, that's, that's, that's one of the points I was, I was hoping to make. I didn't do a very good job, but yes, that's, that's correct because your engineering team always needs to go back and look at the mechanical system, make sure there's enough cooling to fit whatever's going there. Your electrical systems need, you know, potentially need to be upgraded to, for that end. There's also the code issue where you will essentially being, be retrofitting a building and once you cross retrofitting that building at a 50% threshold, so once you get into renovating more than 50% of the building, you have to bring the entire building up to the current codes. So there's a lot that goes into that. But yes, just in my opinion, if, if the design teams kind of let loose to program the design for the entities that, that are going into that space, they can do a very good job at, at creating the space that works, especially now for those, those teams.
And as, Mr. President, just a quick statement is that we're looking for something, again, not today, not tomorrow, but for 30 years out. We've got some funds identified that I think we can, we can pull this off. Let's just do it all in one shot. It's my two cents. Thank you.
And I might add, before we go to Mr. Chenner, I would suspect that if we, you know, I'm not gonna advocate one way or the other tonight, but we would have to do as-built drawings on the entire building probably to proceed if we did this at a later date. And those are not cheap. Would that be correct?
Yes, Mr. President. You will have, you will have a design team that's hired. You know, it might not be the original design team. So that design team that's hired to do the second floor fit out at any time in the future would need to go back to those red line drawings, rely on the red line drawings, the, the accuracy of the red line drawings that they would have in hand. And, you know, that information might be five years old, that information might be unavailable or used or, or changed or whatever that has happened. But yes, it's, it's kind of a process for the design team to go back through and, and they would want to put in their design of the second floor. They would, they would use the documentation that was done during the initial construction process. So they'd be researching, going back in time to research what happened, make sure that was accurate as they developed the, the current set of plans to design the second floor fit out. So it's, it is a costly endeavor, you know, depending on how hungry the architectural market is at the time. That's kind of what you, the risk you take in waiting.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Chenner.
Mr. President, we can, we can start with Mr. Cornick. Through you, Mr. President. The first question I have is I'm struggling with numbers right now. So I heard you say 2.6 million to finish the second floor. Is that correct? Mr. President, through you. Is that correct?
Mr. President, through you. Yes, that's correct. So in the MRG grant application, you are not allowed to include furniture, FFNE items, or contingency items, things like that. So those are actually part of the construction cost, but in order to develop that cost estimate that goes into the MRG grant application, which is, is the 1.99 million dollar number that we're asking for in the MRG grant, there is also costs apart from that, separate from that, that the owner would be required to fund. And so those, those costs are, you know, in contingency numbers in the furniture budget to, to add the conference staples, to add whatever's necessary for those items. So there's a lot of, they call them soft costs to the project that, that bring you up to that 1 point, or 2.6 million dollar estimate that I came up with.
Mr. President, through you. When I look at Noel Griffith cost estimates that were provided to us at the time that we went ahead and said we wanted to do the, the second floor, to some degree, not knowing what degree, he has the shell at the 4,469,850 and then finished second floor at 5,761,800, the difference being 1.29 million. So we've gone from Noel Griffith's estimate of 1.29 to quote, finish the second floor to 2.6. How, how did it jump over a million dollars in this amount of time?
Mr. President, through you. So if you look at that letter, there's a note at the very bottom that, that says the soft costs are not included in this. And so I, that's, that's one area that I always find deficient in estimates, especially from an architect who provides an estimate or even a contractor who provides an estimate. And that is one of the reasons why I, I can get involved early on in the project and ensure that the project stays within budget. Because most of the time in these project construction estimates, they do not include things that the, the owner needs to worry about, like financing costs. The, the owner is required to hire a quality control person to do the concrete testing, to test the structural steel, to do all that stuff. So oftentimes, those costs are, the, the, they call them, they, they like to use the term soft costs. And it, personally, it drives me nuts because the owner, the owner's risk on the project is never fully managed by an architect or a contractor. And so I go through and I take their numbers and then I add, from my experience, what I have seen in those soft costs, in those administrative expenses that are, that are always required to be paid by the owner. And so oftentimes, the, the estimate that you will get from an architect, the estimate you will get from a contractor is best case scenario without thinking about a lot of the other risks that the owner has to consider and take on during those, during the construction process.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the first, the current first floor design, is there any space right now that's sort of just like reserved for future use and/or is there any space for a city prosecutor's office?
Mr. President, through you. There, there has been designed three courtrooms. Currently, one of those spaces for a future courtroom has been chunked into some offices. They will be bare bones, walls, and, and some power outlets and whatnot. For usage, you know, in, in those scenarios, however, they're also, there's, there's public access to that space. I, I don't know how the prosecutor functions and how they, what they need to set up an office, if they need, if it helps to be behind security, you know, how that all functions with the city. That space, they're also small because we're taking a small courtroom and trying to get up into five actual different spaces. Those can be some meeting rooms to, to meet between attorney and client or how those, those spaces are utilized. But I would say probably, it, it could work, but it wouldn't be ideal by any means, I would think, for somebody on city staff working as a prosecutor.
And, Mr. President, one last question for Mr. Hornet. Are you aware of any projects budgeted or underway for renovations to 2101 O'Neil or perhaps another city property that's going to result in displacement of city employees?
Mr. President, through you. I am not aware of any, no.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I could, for the treasurer.
Yeah, please, Mr. Chenner.
Thank you.
If I might, just as an FYI, I know it's a quarter till, but we're gonna go along. We're gonna get through all these questions.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Mr. Treasurer, thank you for these numbers. Very helpful. So the 3.299 in six penny overage from the, that is from the previous six penny tax. Was that, what year was that? 2000?
It was the one that finished up about a year and a half ago. Some was like 2012 through to 2016-ish, maybe 2013.
Okay, so the 2012 election. And there was 3.299 that was approved by the voters for those projects on the 2002 ballot. No.
That is incorrect.
Okay.
The amounts approved by the voters were fully funded.
Yep.
And then as the, the bunnies come in for the taxes above that, that's what this 3.299 million is, we have appropriated and spent or reserved all the other dollars from that six penny tax from 2012. So anything that was included in the ballot is either used for O and M, above and beyond, or it was spent building projects. This is above and beyond anything that was on the ballot.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. President. Do you, Mr. Treasurer, do you know what we've done on the past six pennies with overage of this nature? Have we returned it to the taxpayers? Have we put it in reserves? Do you have any context there?
Mr. President, through you, to Mr. Chenner. I do not have any context for that.
And, and through you, and perhaps the city attorney is more suited to answer this, but are you aware of any restriction for us using that money to help with O and M on projects that were approved in that 2002 ballot? Like I think Municipal Pool maybe was one, Containing Gardens. Could we put little O and M funds on those with this money?
Mr. President, through you, Mr. Chenner. The restrictions that there are currently within the state statutes say you cannot build anything that was voted down on the ballot. So we cannot build a rec center with these funds. So any other projects that were voted down on the ballot, we cannot use it for that. And we cannot use it for general government operations. Those are the restrictions. So they could be used for O and M on, on the previous projects. They could be used for capital construction going forward.
So, Mr. President, you don't think O and M, you think O and M would be, not considered general government operations?
Unless you're maintaining the buildings that were built.
That was built. Okay. Bingo. Okay. So, let's see. The, you have the second quarter reappropriation and you have air service minimum revenue guarantee of 600,000. Why is that revenue guarantee in the second quarter reappropriation and not just an amount sort earmarked in our reserves?
Mr. President, through you. Because I believe the bills will come in. There, there is gonna be something the city is gonna be required to pay. So I think it's appropriate to put 600,000 dollars in the budget now. We're not gonna spend all that this year, but then we can roll it over at the end of, end of this fiscal year into next year. But I believe it is important to get those dollars in the budget now. Okay. We are committed to them.
Gotcha. Okay. Mr. President, the, when you say fifth penny overage, can you explain what you mean by fifth penny overage?
The fifth penny is a time tax. It's not specific projects. It says we have an additional penny on, on, on the sales tax for a period of four years. The original budget says we're gonna have, receive 40 million dollars, 10 million dollars a year for those four years. We blew by that 40 million dollars. We're looking at 52, 53, 54 million dollars in total. So the overages is the difference between what we actually will receive and the 40 million dollars that was actually budgeted for. And part of the resolution for the fifth penny says we will still continue to use 80% of those funds for roadway destruction.
And then, Mr. President, on that, so that, that 20% that goes to human services?
Human services, fire, parks and rec, police, they'll get their pieces of it.
Is that all dedicated or is there an opportunity to use some of that overage, that 20% for this second floor?
No, sir. It is all committed via the fifth penny resolution.
And then, Mr. President, last question for the treasurer. Have there been any cost estimates done, to your knowledge, of what the city's initial cost is going to be for the hitching post property condemnation if in fact we're, we prevail in court and go forward with that?
Mr. President, one, through you, to Mr. Chenner. I don't have any knowledge of those costs at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chenner. Thank you, Mr. Downing. Mr. Labor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any questions, but I have some comments to make. And I want to call the council's attention to something that has been discussed here, and that is, there seems to be an assumption that that application of that SLib board grant is a given. Of course, we have Mr. Downing shaking his head, but in the discussion that I heard earlier, that was included as a funding mechanism and there was question as to what we would do if the grant wasn't awarded. So in regard to that, I want to call everyone's attention to last year when we worked on the 26th Street Interceptor. And Mr. O'Donnell came down from the state of Wyoming and discussed it with us. And we, I think wisely came to the conclusion that we needed to get it as close to the Herschler Building as was financially feasible. Over the recent time, we got it over to Thoms Avenue. But I want to express my very, very serious concern that the choice that we seem to be headed towards here is towards office space and finishing that building with the expectation that the state of Wyoming is gonna participate. When we, what we're doing is turning our back on the fact that until we get the 26th Street Interceptor over to the Herschler Building and the state of Wyoming, that 300 million dollar project that is now coming to conclusion won't have that storm sewer protection that the state of Wyoming has promised and that the state of Wyoming expects. I think that that is really a very serious question that we need to be looking at here. I'm sorry that the city engineer isn't here tonight, but in my discussions with her, she indicated that it was a question of finances, whether or not that design is anywhere near condition that we can put it out for an RFP, get that design finished, get the, get those bids out at some point so that this project can be constructed this summer. I think we're up against it right now and probably have a lot of difficulty there. But I want to emphasize to every one of you here, that choice to the SLib board in the state of Wyoming is for office space. What we're turning away from by our inaction and the fact that, I'm not hearing this discussion coming from anyone but me, is that when we talk about those 30-year needs, as we just heard from a number of speakers, I want to refer us to the 30-year needs that it took us to get a storm sewer system throughout the west side that connects up to the state of Wyoming, which I consider to be, as I'm sure you all are aware, very, very important to catch that flow coming down from the avenues before it gets downtown. This has been planned for, certainly since the great flood of 85. I was in the 2600 block of Warren Avenue in the flood of 85. I dealt with the consequences and saw the consequences of that. And all that time since, we've worked and planned and funded a comprehensive drainage system to deal with that problem. And furthermore, I think we can all remember this summer some of those major storms. And all it takes is one major storm coming down Capitol Avenue, Warren, Cary, to that unprotected 300 million dollar project that the state of Wyoming is just completing. And whose responsibility is it to fulfill our commitment to that drainage system, to fulfill our commitment to the state of Wyoming? And I really, really hope we all consider the idea that we have a SLib board grant here going before the elected officials of the state of Wyoming that definitely is a choice between office space and infrastructure, critical infrastructure. So those are my concerns, Mr. President and members of the council. I, I'm sorry that it's come about this way. I think this is information we should have received long ago. I think that it's critical that we live up to the expectations we've raised and that we make an adjustment here and make sure that we have communication with the state of Wyoming. I know that Mr. O'Donnell would be glad to come visit with us about this, as he did a year ago. And I think that that's very important, you know, choices we're making here with the assumption that we're gonna be applying for a SLib board grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labor. Next.
Mr. President, one comment. One of the things I did talk about earlier with the overages of the fifth penny was Evers Boulevard project and the 26th Street Interceptor. If that, or what Mr. Fountain talked a little bit for me about the possibility of the 26th Street.
Mr. President, through you, to the council. There's been a conversation, the mayor had a conversation with legislative committee last week, leadership specifically in regards to the state committing a two-thirds and then us bringing one-third for the 26th Street Interceptor. It's important, she says, to understand that it's not an either or on the project. It's that we can find the mechanisms to do both. Mr. Downing alluded to that just a moment ago, and that these conversations are continuously happening. We're trying our best to keep council involved and we have council members on each one of our committees that we work with. We hope that the information that is shared within those committees gets back to the entire council. But she wanted me to, to let you all know that we are aware of it. It is a concern of the mayor's office as well, as well as the legislative body, and they are working on trying to find out the mechanisms. they are working on trying to find out the mechanism and create the funding for that as we speak today.
Mr. President.
Mr. Labor.
In response to this, um, what we're really talking about here is timing. Is that project ready to go out to bid? Is, can we foresee that it will be ready to go out to bid in the next five or six months?
I don't.
What will the, when you're talking about the cost increases here in regard to the office space, I think we need to take into consideration the escalating cost that will happen with delaying or postponing that drainage system. And, um, I'm sorry that, uh, I'm unaware of any communication or comments about this project, and I, I want to really emphasize here, uh, the term conversation. This is much more serious than a conversation. This is a matter of communication. This is a matter of absolute importance to us, and so the idea is somehow going to be taken care of in the next few months. And that the state of Wyoming, um, that I'm hearing Mr. Fountain speak to, I think we need to get the state of Wyoming in here and hear from them directly as to, uh, what they think about this.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Labor, and, and I appreciate the comments, and I see how the two could potentially complete, um, these conversations. We go on, ongoing. I don't want to get too derailed. These are important conversations to have, but, um, if you have anything additional to add briefly on Twenty-Sixth, and then move along on that.
Just very briefly, the mayor, they are working currently right now with a supplemental budget amendment specific to the interceptor. That's as much information as I have. That information was as of Friday, and they have committed to a two-thirds. They are trying to get that put through legislation right now.
And, and would it be a fair ask to, to, to get an update, um, from, from engineering as to where we're at with this project and if funding were identified, what timeframe they could see that on the calendar this year or next?
Absolutely, Mr. President, Case. And I think, um, my, my understanding from the mayor is that they're looking to get this project pushed forward this summer to completion. So we can get that information for you.
So I hope we can get an update on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Eskel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I know that you did send some questions, and I don't think that some of those were addressed.
Right. Uh, just to follow up on Mr. Labor's concern, uh, when we started working on that project, it was two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. President up in Torrenton was with the Shell, Cary Junior High. They had it done then when we first started, to save, state would have saved six million dollars on that one project. So I know delays cost money. One of the questions was if we had any other displaced employees, is the city paying any other leases? Would that be?
Essentially, the question was, um, and I'm going to paraphrase, so if I get it wrong, Ms. Eskel, let me know, but do we lease any space where, currently, where employees reside or do we anticipate something like that happening in the future?
Vicky Nemec, Public Works, um, there, we, the city does not lease any office space. We do lease one, uh, small space across from the street, now a division that is an open space for storage that's a thousand dollars a month. But beyond that, no, the city does not lease those.
Good. The state sure didn't.
It still does.
Yeah.
The only other follow-up I had was, um, when I went to other cities, they've changed these names from courthouses to judicial centers, and I've always liked that better because, uh, you talk about if you're going to court, it's not a good thing, but if you're going to a judicial center, you're seeking justice, uh, maybe there might be somewhere you can go in that direction. And then the last one, Mr. President, uh, was having that be a one-stop shop for your legal deeds on that second floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Did, did you get your answer to that question in terms of the one-stop shop and what direction they were kind of hoping to have?
Been talking about that, but as far as the mayor's office going there or council's office, I guess I'm not visioning that at this point.
Thank you, Mr.?
No, me? No. I don't have anything right now. I will as soon as this is over with, but.
Of course you do. Why you think I've been sitting next to you for six years?
I don't know.
Somebody, somebody doesn't like either one of us. Uh, first of all, uh, I just want to say through you, uh, Mr. President, to Mr. Fountain, I think this, this has definitely been helpful. I think this is a lot of the information you and I have been trying to, to talk about, uh, trying to get, to get forward. Um, I, I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Downey's information as far as breaking, breaking it down the way he did. I think this is very helpful. I do also want to say too, and to sort of echo what, uh, Mr. Fountain had said as far as, um, you know, everything, everything that I've received, either myself or Mrs. Nemec have, have sent on as far as the courthouse, uh, in particular, through all the meetings with the committee and all that stuff. So, um, I definitely feel like, uh, information has, has been disseminated as far as that's concerned, but I do have, uh, just a few questions because it is my wife's birthday, so I blame this all on you, so, so you know. Um, and she does have your number because I gave it to her today. Um, so, and, uh, she has yours too, just in case, you know, he throws it off onto you.
Appreciate that.
Um, just a few things, um, uh, maybe I'll just direct these to Mr. Fountain and just make it easy, if, if that would be okay. I'm just sort of wondering if, um, Eric, you had, you had mentioned, maybe just so we can research it, um, you had mentioned in your comments that, uh, they've been developing an annex. Do you have some, some specifics? You didn't mention any specifics in your, in your comments, any specific communities, and Ben may have some of that information as well, but do you have some specific communities that, I mean, we could just?
Go in a different direction, or you look at an entire municipal building. Ones actually housed in the municipal building. It's very rare that you would find Public Works or that you would find the city clerk and all of those folks housed together, especially in the new concept design. So that's where the conversation initially started, but I'm more than happy to give that information.
Yeah, and I, and I do, uh, through you, Mr. President, I do recall that same, that same conversation, and I, and I don't ever recall them giving us specific places where...
That is accurate.
And maybe that's a question I can ask for our next meeting, frankly, but, um, I did also, and again, I, I don't recall this, maybe Mrs. Nemec or, uh, Ben might be able to answer this as well, but, um, you know, we talked, or, or yourself, Mr. Fountain, frankly, uh, but the, quite, I guess, um, my question is, um, uh, we talked about the, uh, second meeting room being converted into a multi-use space. And I was sort of thinking more along the lines of, you know, because I, I know in some of our discussions, we talked about, you know, could a prosecutor go there? Would it work? Would it not work? I mean, we've, we've talked about that quite a bit, but I am wondering if part of that space could be used for the spot for the court security office. Not that they're going to need one a lot, but I mean, you know, I, I, I do agree with, with Chief Kozak. I mean, they, they may have a need for a space from time to time, and that would seem to me, you know, one of those four or five offices in there would be a good place for that.
Vicky Nemec, Public Works, it, uh, we, uh, I believe we broke it down into four spaces and, um, not huge, but something that could be used, that could certainly be used for, uh, a police type of, uh, office for staging, um, for security or, and, or purposes similar to that, yes.
Yeah, i- i- in response, uh, Mr. Mr. President, through you, I think, um, just, just hypothetically speaking, um, I'm thinking that, that it would be best if that space was in that, was in, you know, if, if one of those staging areas or an office for, for PD and court security could be there, um, as opposed to on the second floor. I think that would just be, uh, uh, if, if nothing else, a, uh, an extra, an extra time when you're going to be seeing, uh, police, uh, police presence in the building, uh, you know, uh, for the public. And I just think as far as, uh, uh, efficiency and response time, if, if something was needed or whatever, I think this would be a, a, a good place for it as opposed to any contemplation on the second floor, so.
It, it seems appropriate because that space is adjacent to security screening as you come in.
Yeah. And I just had one more, and I believe I'll, I'll direct this question to, uh, Attorney Hackle, if she, if she may. Thank you, Mrs. Nemec. I appreciate, appreciate that. Mr. President, through you to, uh, to Sylvia, um, I guess, uh, one question that came to mind when you were talking about, because I, I mean, we all, we all do certainly know that you don't, you don't only supervise the attorneys in your office, you also have, have risk management. And again, we keep talking about what we have now as opposed to, you know, because I mean, some, some different mayor, you know, down the road, eight, four, eight, ten years, whatever, down the road, may not have risk management under the city attorney or whatever. So, and I'm just wondering, I don't know, I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around, I realize they are personnel within your office, um, the way we're currently constituted, but I'm wondering about the efficiency of the risk management personnel being on the finished second floor as opposed to being here. Uh, just, just with their, just with my somewhat general knowledge of, of, of their role and, and the fact that, I mean, it's, you know, I, I mean, it just seems to me that they probably need to be closer to where things are, where things are going on and then, and the most employees that they're paying attention to. Maybe, maybe that's wrong, but that just seems to me that it, they're, they're better suited here. So I, I'm just asking you to help me see what I'm missing.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Cook. Uh, and I'm only being partially facetious. If we wanted our safety officer close to the action, he'd live at sanitation.
Right.
And that's not an insult to Ms. Nemec or her staff. They've got those big trucks on the street every day, and that's where the claims come from.
They get all the claims.
And, and Mr. Wilkinson is out on the road most of every day. His, his colleague, Ms. Sutherland, our claims risk specialist, is in the office every single day. I talked to, I talked to both of them in person every single day. In addition to signing vouchers, I review claims, uh, we talk to our Wyoming Association of Risk Management. There is no function that Marilyn performs that requires her presence in this building. Her interaction, I believe, with whoever the risk manager is, is however, critical to just her having somebody to touch base with and, you know, what are we going to do with this claim? And could you please sign off on that voucher? Because believe it or not, it's not all electronic yet. Um, I physically sign my name several million times a day, it feels like. Um, so I personally, I, I have two thoughts. One is that I believe risk management belongs in the city attorney's office. In other cities, it's either with the attorney or HR, but, you know, there's no room in HR right now either, but that's another possibility. Because, and in fact, the mayor would like us to consider calling the legal office and the risk management office sort of the, the safety office or the, the legal safety office because our focus is on preventing those sorts of, if we can prevent claims, we'd much rather prevent them than respond to them or have to deal with them in court. So personally, I believe it's important to be, to have them be connected. And in respect, if I might, Mr. Mr. President, to the conversation that was new information to me about dividing up one of those small courtrooms on the first floor into four offices, there are right now, um, six, um, well, seven. We, we need sevens, eight, if we count Marilyn. We need, we have six offices right now and two, two staff members in open spaces. So we couldn't fit in either the four offices or the remaining three. There's just more of us than that. And if you ask me, could you split the prosecutorial function from the rest of the city attorney's office? Yes. I'm not going to be disingenuous and tell you we couldn't. We certainly could. That's what they invented the phone and email for. I will tell you, however, I have one, Paralegal, who's also our office manager. So were you to split the offices, I'd be happy to come back and request an additional staff member to serve in that function for the other half of the office that doesn't move. And that's, that's not a threat. That's just reality. I need that function if, if the office splits, but you could split it. So there are options, and I'm happy to be as creative as you direct my office to be. I hope that helps.
It does, it does. Um, I'll, I'll just have to have further conversation with you.
That's fine.
About that, because it just seems to me like, and I do agree with you, that, um, they are out and about. I mean, Mike is out, out and about all the time, uh, doing those things. So I mean, I, I guess I'm just wondering, efficiency-wise, I mean, I understand what you're saying as far as, as the vouchers and those things and being able to communicate to you directly, but I'm just wondering if their sole purpose is to be out and be responsive, um, to those things, which they, they are very responsive. I mean, they, they have a good reputation for doing what we need them to do. So I mean, it just sort of seems to me that maybe then it, it doesn't mean, I, it just doesn't matter where they're at. I, I don't know, but I, I mean, I'd, I'd like to have further conversation with you about that.
I look forward to it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you, Ms. Hackle. Dr. Renee, did you have anything?
Yeah, pardon me. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions. I guess I, I kind of like the idea of the space being used for flex space. If, I mean, I know the intent of, um, Mrs. Ora's talked several times about the work that he's done in this building and how it needs to be remodeled and brought up to date. So it, you know, it does make some sense to me to use the second floor of the municipal building as flex space, similar to how the school district wants to use the old Cary Junior High once the new one built. But if we, if we go that direction, I mean, it's going to be used, I mean, the tenants will be used by several different, different departments over a period of time, so we can't really plan that much specificity into it, I wouldn't think. And, and so how easy is that to be designed, to design? And I guess that's my first question. I don't know if Mr. Hornick can answer that or if that's just a question that we have there. And then, the other question, the other question was, not, I guess I didn't hear the answer to, maybe it's not been asked, but, you know, we've been told that this needs to be decided as soon as possible, but what does that mean? I mean, what is our drop dead date? When do we have to have decisions to, when we're doing this? So I kind of want an answer to that. And then for, for the treasurer, um, how much do we have, Ron, how much did we have for three-year, Mr. President? How much do we have last year we were in? When, when into the budget?
Mr. Case, through you to Mr. Renee. We returned, uh, two-point-two-six-nine million dollars in conversions last year.
Okay.
And ten percent of that went to the employees?
Correct. So approximately two million.
A little over two million, yes. Minus the two million or the two and a dozen we paid for.
Correct. So I guess my one thought is, I mean, we saved two million dollars last year. I know, I know that the treasurer said, some of us said we shouldn't be taking money out of reserves, but we put that money in reserves knowing that we had, we were going to have a need for it and use for it. So I guess it doesn't, if we have to take some out of reserves, that doesn't bother me tremendously because, like I said, we put money into there when we were going to do it. The other question I have, and it's kind of generic, but when we were talking about monies and commitments, one discussion was, we were going to have monies, um, you know, committed to Christianson Road, and we had no, no idea what the cost overruns were going to be on that. Now, it was a joint city-county project with each of us putting in seven and a half million dollars, even though, you know, the city was going to manage that project. So if there are overruns, are we on foot for that, or is that, has anybody in the county about splitting that at fifty percent since it's a joint project? I was wondering about that. And then, yeah, this is kind of a generic question, but we had a three-point-three-million-dollar overage in sixteen.
Didn't we take the whole thing? Didn't we take the whole thing? I think so.
How did we miss that we were gonna get that reserve, like, we just can't find them there because. We cut 3 million dollars out of the place, out of the public safety building because we were gonna come up 3 million dollars short, so. We didn't finish it or cut things out of it. We cut 300,000 dollars out of the pool because it was budgeted at. Half a billion and came in, the debts came in at 800,000, so we were 200,000 dollars short on it. And then, in the end, it turns out we have the money, so how do we avoid doing things like that in the future?
Mr. Case, through you to Mr. Rennie. It's where the sales taxes are collected, not necessarily the old budgets for it. The amounts of, of balance are set.
I understand that.
And then, the funds come in at a certain point and they don't stop collecting the tax until all the projects within the county are funded. So, if all of our projects got funded before someone about Alvin and Burns and those kinds of places working for you, that's where the overages come from.
But isn't it dis, isn't it dispersed just based on percentage of each project as a total?
It is, but I think there's a possibility, I don't know this for certain, that within the city, we give no collections for sales taxes and then do other counties. So, maybe on based a little bit on population also, but.
Well, yeah, but those, those are my questions, Mr. President, so it really comes back to, when do we have to make this decision? And if we decide to use it for flex space. How much specificity is gonna be designed in that and there needs to be designed in that, so.
Mr. Hornak, if you wanna take a stab at it, I, I've been told that we need to know. Prior to putting foundation in, because we need to know what's going to be on the second floor. And that foundation needs to be engineered. I've heard talk of perhaps a vault needing to be put in and structurally that needs to be supported, but. Outside of that, I'd have a similar question to Dr. Rennie. When do we need to know, because unless we're thinking about putting a vault in there. Can't imagine anything other that would weigh so much that potentially collapse that second floor.
Mechanical.
Mechanical, so if, go ahead.
Mr. President, I'll, I'll do my best to answer some of these questions, I might need some clarification a little bit on, on some, but. First regarding the date. On the project schedule, one of the critical items is this detail of the second floor. So, that is listed in the project schedule, we're, we're set to have construction documents to be ready to go out to bid. April 4th. And so, between today and April 4th. We've got a basically complete design to a point where subcontractors could bid on everything so that we get. We can nail down the project, the, the completed project budget and it. And so. That essentially gives us a little more than two months to do whatever programming is required by the design team to. Fit it, to fit the agency or, or whoever's going into second floor, to, to fit them in that space, to work with them, to program their needs. Whether, whatever that is with data, conference rooms, electrical needs. Mechanical elements to cool an IT space or whatever that is, they, those programming elements need to be done right away, so. I, I'm just learning the process that the city has to go through and it's a, it's a, a great legislative process. It's an important process that that has to happen. My recommendation would be that something be done at the next city council meeting this coming Monday. To ensure that this design can move forward with the second floor. That's, that's just my recommendation because of the. Again, the, the potential extra cost that you would incur, say that decision is not made. This go around, it's made in another couple of weeks. So, the, the problem becomes then you're, you're dealing with additional design, you're dealing with change orders to the contractor scope of work. And you're, you're looking at setting your project budget through those means. Just creates a little more hassle and you, you never get back the money that you. The, the cheapest you will ever. The cheapest budget you will ever find is from that initial design bid, when everybody's hungry, when everybody's trying to. Tighten their belts in order to get the project, so. If that.
Yeah, Dr. Rennie?
Mr. President, I, I understand Mr. Hornak's argument, I. The thing I, the thing that I can envision is, I mean, the alternatives, couple of the alternatives in his presentation were one. He moved the attorney, mayor, possibly the council over the second floor. The other alternative was to keep that as base as we remodel this building as, you know. Various departments move into there as, as their space here is remodeled. If we elect that alternative, knowing that at some point all these different departments are gonna be located there. How do you plan for that? How, how do you say, we say this is, I mean, you said you, you need to know what goes where. But that's so generic, that how is it possible to plan for that if we say that's what we, we. If we say that's what our desire is?
So, Mr. President, are you. I guess I don't, I don't quite understand what the, what the, what your idea of the flex space is, so is it that. We kind of core and shell the second floor and use that to.
Well, I'm going on, I, Mr. President, I, I'd interested in Mr. Hornak to say that that was one of our alternatives, so I guess an example is that. We decide we're going to use that space as we remodel the city building and so. For six to eight months of the year, the planning department will be in there while their space gets remodeled here and then. And then, after that, the treasurer's department, treasurer's, and everybody under the treasurer is gonna be in there once, until their space is remodeled, so. When you're, when Mr. Hornak's suggestion was that we use that as to house apartments as their areas get. Remodeled within the city building, that's what I envisioned, so. Am I, am I not picturing it correctly? Or if that's, or if that is a legitimate option, if that's one we pick. How do we design for that scenario?
So, Mr. President, I, I might have caused some confusion in some of my comments. There's, there's two scenarios, one would be to just core out the second floor, which is essentially what the project is right now, it's, it's. And that core means, basically, you walk up those stairs and it's a wide open empty space with, with, where you can see the exterior walls. So. The second part of the option on the table would be to finish the second floor to house whatever entity. The city seems to, it, it seems right on the city, from the city's perspective, to be housed in there. And I would say the best option is to permanently house, to, to build out the second floor for a permanent residence on there. So, one of the, one of the things that you gain, and this is just my two cents on that, but. You gain a lot of space up on third floor, once you move all those entities to the new building. You gain that space as your flex space where some of the entities in this space can move much cheaper. Into third floor or, or move people around to renovate whatever space in this building. So, so you're just moving people within this building up to a, an empty space and then. What happens to that space in the future is, is actually.
So, Mr. President, what I'm hearing is the way I envision it really won't work very well, so we pretty much have to have a determination of what's going in.
I, I think your goal was to potentially have something on the agenda next Monday to be released, perhaps.
And Mr. President, would be my recommendation to have that on the agenda to make a decision whether or not to finish out second floor, I guess.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dr. Rennie?
Follow up to that, I understa, okay, I understand that part needs to be made. That decision needs to be made. Soon, obviously, but then, at what point? Do, does Mr. Hornak need the decision on what's going to be located there, if the assumption is, as he said, it would be easier to. Determine the permanent, that would be the permanent home for whoever we decide to.
So that, make sure, I understand. Is it?
I mean, we can easily say, we can introduce next week a resolution, change this resolution, say we're gonna finish out the second floor. But within that resolution, does it have, does he need the list of what offices are going to go there, like within. It's introduced Monday, it goes to meeting.
The next Monday's meeting.
It's gonna be timeframe. That's my other question, and what's the drop dead date on, when do we have to decide what, who is going there, who's going to finish?
Mr. President, I would recommend including that in the resolution on Monday, it seems like there is a general consensus. I don't know if it can be finalized, but a general consensus with attorney's office, mayor's office and. Maybe something else, I, I can't speak to city operations, but. I do think that this, that determination, you know, I would say it would be really good to be able to move forward with design to have that. Specified in the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, this one observation, I, which I've told you all along, those who've asked me about it. I realize we have phones and we have email, but it doesn't make sense to have the chief executive officer isolated from the rest of the. Rest of the staff and the rest of the offices.
Thanks, Dr. Rennie.
Thank you, Mr. Hornak.
Vicky Nemec, Public Works, if I may address the six penny issue of overage. Historically, the two taxes ago, you waited until you collected the money to, to build a project. As a result of the last two taxes, we went out for financing to build a project ahead of time. When you build a project ahead of time, you have to have that budget ahead of time. So, when you get to the end, you've spent your budget, but you also have some remaining money collected in overage. So, that's, that is a function of us now financing projects in the beginning and ending up with overage at the end. The statute does allow you to, for the six penny, to include in the resolution what you intend to do with any overage you collect. But frankly, it's very, it was very difficult to find and I found it a couple of years ago and it's, it's very obscure in there. But it does allow you to do that and in the future, I think that that's something that we should do, is identify what you're gonna do with those six penny overages.
Mr. Pittman?
Yeah, I was gonna go all the way around again, but.
Just on that, on that note.
Sure.
So, Ms. Nemec, how much debt do we have currently that we're paying on for the 2012 six penny projects?
Zero.
Okay.
Dr. Rennie, anything?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, did any other questions get spurred through conversation by any other members of council? I had, I'm seeing, no, it's all the way, I had a few. And first would probably be for. Mr. Downey and/or Ms. Nemec. And the Christiansen on this page, other major projects. 15 million dollars is the budget, which we know is gonna be clear, 7.5 million is coming from the city, 7.5 million is coming from the county. Is that a correct statement?
Mr. President, Ron Downey, City Treasurer. The way the current six penny tax is being collected, all 15 million of that is coming to the city.
Okay, so then, then my math was right, I, I just picked a number out of my hat because I believe that's how. Often things are done here and added 20%. And. What's that?
That'd be 3 million.
That'd be what?
3 million, 20% of the.
Yeah, that, that's exactly correct and I don't have any statistics to say 20% is, is a good number to pick, but. When we look at recent past, I think that's a pretty fair estimate. And then, so if we look at 80% of fifth penny taxes to be used on roads of 10 million and change. If we use, utilize that, would drop that to 7 million. So, how would that square with plans for future road pavement and all of that?
I believe we, within that 10 million dollars, and it's gonna be a little bit larger next, we have one more payment coming in for the December sales, but. I believe we, we, we can cover the Evers project, we can cover this 26th Street interceptor. Possibly in whole or at least one third of it, if the state does come forward with a two thirds, one third proposition. And then, we can cover the, the overages on the Christiansen Road project for 390 easily.
Okay, so, would it be too much to, to get guestimates on. Just so we are clear on this number, I mean, I know they're not firm, but guestimates on cost for 26th Street, Evers. We're already using, I mean, 3 million for Christiansen and the fourth one was what?
That was Evers, Christiansen and 26th Street.
So, can we get wag numbers on those for the next day or two?
I can get with the city engineer and Vicky might have something on Evers also.
I just want to be, if we're gonna be significantly over this 10 million, based on numbers that we have today, then we have a problem and if don't, then we're, we're good.
Vicky Nemec, Public Works, I just talked to the project manager before this meeting on Evers Boulevard. The numbers are right at 6.1 million dollars for the total, we have 2 million dollars budgeted. So, we're looking at an additional, at the worst case scenario for the city's portion of 4.1 million. For Evers Boulevard. If the 26th Street interceptor, my understanding is that it could be a 3 million dollar project, that's a, that's a wag. If the state were going to.
We all know what a wag is, right?
Yeah. If the state were to provide two thirds of that, that would be 2 million for the state and 1 million for the state.
Okay, so if we use three, that's a more aggressive number.
Correct.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so we're at nine, Christiansen, Evers and 26th, which leaves. A little over a million left, but.
We could buy a pothole.
Well, and we're gonna have, like, like Mr. Downey said, that we're gonna have another payment on top of that.
Yeah.
So, okay, so then, let's see if I had anything else. The hitch was mentioned, we say we don't. And I think, you know, who knows what's gonna happen with that legal process, so I'm willing to worry about that later. I guess I don't, everything else I had was unanswered, so. Any other questions? If not, I really appreciate the staff taking the time to prepare.
You're gonna do closing, go around again.
Oh. I, I already, I just kinda said, does anybody have anything else?
If I could, just.
Mr. Shane?
Mr. President, I would reiterate that, thank you for putting all this information together and thank you, President Case, for organizing this work session, I think it was a very. Insightful discussion. A couple of things, sort of larger themes. One, the notion of elected officials voting to spend taxpayer dollars to build themselves posh office space downtown. Needs to be off the table immediately. It's just really inappropriate and I think frankly it jeopardizes the viability of the six penny going forward. This, this project is already 50% over what we initially were going to spend on it. Probably more by the time we're done with it, so I, I would put that caution out there in terms of the viability of the six penny. And building this new space for elected officials, I haven't heard any specific necessity for building out that second floor yet. The only two that I've heard are the prosecutor and possible law enforcement, which can be accommodated in the unassigned space that's already being contemplated on the first floor. Second, a little bit of institutional knowledge, when I first got on council. Second, a little bit of institutional knowledge, when I first got on council six years ago, we had nothing in reserves. And, and what that does is it places you in a position where you cannot do big capital construction projects. You can't just pencil 4.5 million dollars in for a second floor courthouse. And because of that, we put policies in place, including that 60-day reserves. And we deliberately tried to build up our reserves so that we do have money to do a project like this. And thankfully we do, and that, and this is an appropriate use. But I caution you in the sense that we're already resolved in the resolution we passed to pay 4.5 million dollars out of our reserves to build out a second floor. That is to quote, shell it out. If we went forward with 2.6 million more or even more by the time we're done, we're going to be under 3 million dollars left in our reserves to utilize for all these different things that have been mentioned that we don't really have certainty on. So caution my colleagues that 4.5 million in reserves right now on this one project is a lot in itself. I think it's too much to commit another 2.6, possibly three to this project at this time when there hasn't been a specific necessity for finishing that second floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Or anybody else have further closing comments before we adjourn for the evening? If not, again, thank you all for preparing. Thank you for participating and have a good evening.